Thank you for joining us this evening, regular scheduled council meeting of the Park City City Council on December 8th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Marlo, would you call the roll?
Sean Lanier.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Sausetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr. Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, George is going to lead in the invocation and John's going to lead in the pledge. Everybody please stand.
Father God in heaven, we ask for unity tonight in making decisions that affect the citizens of Park City. We pray for wisdom, guidance, and discernment. We pray for provision for any residents in need. Please continue to guide us, O Lord, with all truth and righteousness. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Jim?
May I second that?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. Tonight, we have several things under awards and presentations, and it's my honor and privilege to swear in Aaron Miller as one of our new officers, if you want to go ahead and come on up.
Just raise your right hand. On my honor, I will never betray my badge.
I'll never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I'll always have the courage.
To hold myself.
To hold myself.
And others accountable.
And others accountable.
For our actions.
For our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I'll always uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Kansas.
And the state of Kansas.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Thank you, and congratulations. All right, and we have some service awards to present this evening to some of our employees that have made some career milestones at the five and 15-year mark. Dana, would you like to go ahead and do those?
I ask, O Lord, these are the fun times when we get to talk about our employees because we have great staff.
Staff? Okay, I'll start over. This is fun time because we get to talk about our staff. We have great staff here, and we're particularly pleased when we have staff who have stayed with us and who have been promoted in their careers. We have that this evening. So, the first person that I would like to recognize is Andrew Davis. So Andrew has been with us for five years now, and he started with the city as a seasonal street tech. He served two years in that, and then he came on full-time, and he has now served five years with the city as a full-time employee. So, thank you for your service.
You're going to be in a while.
The next person that I would like to recognize is Sharon Funk. Sharon started with us five years ago, and she started as the assistant, assistant, okay, I won't get this title correct, but basically it was receptionist at our front desk, administrative assistant/receptionist. And we have that term because it's a wide variety of tasks that happens at that front desk. It's a tough job. So then she was promoted over into our court. She was the assistant court clerk, and then promoted to court clerk. And so Sharon is the person that makes all the magic happen in court. That's working with staff, working with our court crew, which includes our judge, our prosecutor, and public defender, and so she makes those things happen. So, we very much appreciate your service to the city, Sharon.
Thank you.
I don't know why I'm smiling, because you can't see that.
I see you're smiling.
Okay. Okay, so our next person for five years is Tracy Prado. And Tracy is a corporal in our police department. She actually started with the city in our code enforcement department, and then she applied for, and we happily hired her in to our police department. She started out as a police officer one, and she is serving currently as a corporal. So we appreciate your service very much, Tracy. So, thank you very much. So now we're going to move up to 15 years, which is a long time for people to serve, to serve our citizens, and we very much appreciate it. I would like to recognize Dean Newcomer. Dean is not able to be here this evening, but he does work in our park department. He is a park tech, too, so we thank him for his years of service. And then last but not least, I would like to recognize Lieutenant Wolf. So, 15 years of service to the city, started out as a police officer one, has served in many, many special assignments and many ranks throughout that. Police officer one, police officer two, senior police officer, sergeant, and now lieutenant. And if I missed any, I apologize, but very important person in our police department. He's filling in for the chief this evening. Thank you for your service. Once again, thank you to our staff.
Usually this is something we get the opportunity to do during our Christmas or holiday celebration with our staff, but under current conditions, we've decided not to hold that. That gave us the opportunity to recognize those employees this evening at the council meeting. That was, that was exciting for us. We'll move on to public forum, and we have Steve and Bob for the December events team.
Good evening. Just wanted to, first of all, wish everybody happy holidays, hope everybody's staying healthy. The reason we're here is, for the last, well, at least 12 years, seven years under JET, we've been doing the July events in the park, and that was done on our own 501(c)(3). So it's come time to wind down that 501. It will no longer exist after the 31st of December. So, a little bit of background, we did some research, and we found out we were required to give the proceeds of our account to a nonprofit within the city of Park City. Well, not within the city. We could have picked any 501(c)(3), but obviously we wanted to stay within the city because, you know, our choices were to give it to a nonprofit or nonprofit charitable or to the federal government. We ruled that one out real quick. So, gave it a little bit of thought. The proceeds we've got left, the reason the amount is as high as it is, just so everybody is aware, we had to put down a 50% deposit on fireworks every year and on the concerts and everything else. So there was a bit of money in there, and we thought very carefully about who would be the best recipient within the city of Park City to receive the money of the business citizens in the city of Park City that have been donated to us over the years. So, our choice was the Park City Public Library. So with that said, I'd just like to thank everybody for all the years we've been able to put on a show for you guys, and if you ever need us to volunteer for anything else, give me a shout. On that, I'll turn it over to Bob.
Myself, I've been with you guys for 27 years with the events for July. I'm not tired, but the wife wants to start traveling outside of Park City, so we're going to hit the road with that. The car show, we'll see. Hopefully somebody takes it over. As of right now, nobody's stepped up. I had a couple of people ask me about it, what's it take to run a car show? And I said, the willingness to lose $3,000 or $4,000 if it rains out, and they just kind of walk off. So, but from my heart, my family, we want to thank everybody for your support over the last 26, 27 years. And we'll be around, but we're going to present Lanier with the check for $7,500 to use for the library.
And we thank you very much. We've been a partner with the car show that nobody really knew about for years and years and years. We provided all their printing at no cost to them as our part of providing for the Fall Festival. So, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Can we get you guys to turn around and get a picture?
Bob, Steve, thank you both for everything you do for the city.
Mr. Mayor.
We'll move on to the staff reports, and we'll hear from our city administrator, Sean Fox.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Not so much a report tonight, just a couple upcoming events to make council aware of. First of all, at the last council meeting, council approved continuing the relationship with Confluence, the firm out of Kansas City, for the planning of downtown development. We knew that the next important milestone would be to start public engagement, and just want to let everyone know what we're looking at is on July, or excuse me, not July, January 27th. That's the last Wednesday of the month, and that's normally when the Chamber of Commerce has their lunch. And so that is going to be the program, to where they will come, set up various different stations with representative pictures of what the possibilities are, so that way we can have some input provided from key stakeholders, business owners within the community. Later on that evening, they will host a workshop here at council chambers for citizens to stop by, and then after that, it'll be tied into surveys, online surveys, so that way people have options or choices as far as how they would like to participate and make certain that their opinion and their vote matters. So that's number one. As far as the last announcement, Park City Pride, everyone should know, is sponsoring their annual Christmas lights contest. The deadline is December 13th this year, and they plan on awarding both a first and second place prize to each district or each ward. So there will be a total of eight. So you can either nominate yourself or nominate your neighbor if you can, but December 13th is the deadline. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Sean? Not seeing any. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Brandy?
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Jim?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item eight under new business, which is discuss and consider reappointments to the convention and tourism board. So, all of these folks have continued to do a good job for CNT. Many of them have been around for quite a while, and I would recommend that we continue our relationship with them because they do a great job serving the city. Tom?
I would move that we appoint Warren Hardy, Scott Crawford, Ben Bolander, Karen Howout, and Jack Whitson as convention tourism board for the term ending January 2023.
Second. John? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item nine, which is hold a public hearing and consider approval of the 2020 amended utility fund and special highway fund budget. We'll open that public hearing at 7:14.
I think I can take this with me. Staff has projected expenditures through the end of 2020 and recommends amending the following two funds. Special Street Fund, this fund is projected to exceed the budget due to the purchase of the Street Sweeper. Staff is proposing the budget be increased from $862,695 to $886,030. Second fund is the Utility Fund. This fund includes water, sewer, and trash departments, and the trash department is projected to exceed budget by $35,500. Although the water and sewer department projections are sufficiently under budget to offset the trash department overage, the total utility fund expenditures are anticipated to be close enough to the budget. The staff recommends amending the budget from $3,547,829 to $3,647,829 as a just-in-case measure in order to be more confident that the city will not end the year with a budget violation. This increase would provide the city with additional budget authority in the event there were costly events that arise, such as sewer listation issues, water main breaks, et cetera. The primary reason this fund is projected to be so close to the amount initially budgeted is due to the additional expenditures for the design and construction of the water main improvements north of 69th Street North from Broadway to I-135. A public hearing and adoption are required to amend these two budgets. And as a reminder, Marlo has the budget certificate, so if this item is approved, please remember to stop and sign it before you leave tonight.
Okay. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this? Does anybody have any questions for Dee? There are recommendations from the council. Ben?
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve to adopt the amended budgets for the special street funds in the amount of $886,030, and the utility fund in the amount of $3,647, or $3,400, $647,829. There we go. Get it out.
And George?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, and I'll close the public hearing at 7:17. And we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item 10, which is discuss and consider approval of the write-offs of 2015 and 2016 uncollectible utility accounts.
I can't, excuse me. Accounts that are likely to be uncollectible should be written off annually in order to avoid accounts receivable balances becoming unreasonably high. Since Park City does not prepare financial statements under the GAAP basis of accounting, accounts receivable is not reported in the audited financial statements. However, it's still important that the account balances on the city's books be reflective of the amount the city can reasonably expect to collect. It recently came to my attention that Park City has not written off balances on utility accounts that were billed after 2014. Additionally, unpaid accounts that were billed after 2013 have not been submitted to the state of Kansas set-off program for collection. To rectify this, admin staff has been very busy working diligently and sending the required notices to customers, so we can start sending the old unpaid debts to the set-off program. This has taken a considerable amount of time, so the 2015 and 2016 outstanding debts were the only ones that were ready to be written off prior to this meeting, and we are now ready to start creating some badges to send to the set-off. Please realize that the write-off process merely moves the bills from accounts receivable and charges the bad debt expenditure accounts. The unpaid balances do not go away, but rather are moved to a bad debt section in N-code. Tonight, we're asking for your approval of the 2015 and 2016 amounts we have written off. Next steps will be to finish sending the required notices to customers on unpaid accounts billed in years 2017 through 2019, to start the process of sending debts to the set-off program for the years after 2013, and to write off the unpaid balances on accounts that were billed in years 2017 through 2019. Staff will also begin looking for bad debts before signing customers up for service or were not providing services to someone without collecting the balance on any previous unpaid bill they may have.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the 2015 write-offs in the amount of $10,243.04 and the 2016 write-offs in the amount of $16,465.05.
Jim?
I'd second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? Brandy?
Are these amounts being sent to the set-off program?
They're going to be. We're working on that right now. Like I said, accounts haven't been set since 2013. None of my staff has sent them, so it's a learning process at the moment, but we're getting ready to start working on those. We need to have them in before tax returns start going out because that's the big time of the year for them to collect those debts and send them out on the state refunds.
And then you're going to start looking at 17 through 19?
Yes.
Do you know approximately what that dollar amount is that hasn't been sent?
I have not run those yet. We were scrambling to be ready for this meeting, so I would guess it'd be somewhat comparable to the amounts we've done so far, but I can't answer that.
And are we going to put processes in place that way we don't go and go, what?
Yes.
Five, six years before doing this again?
Yes, and this is a lot of work. My staff's worked very hard. There's a ton of work getting, especially since there's so many years, it's daunting really. But yes, once we get to the end of the old stuff, then we're absolutely going to be on the new stuff.
Right. I mean, it's big dollar amounts for...
It is. It is. I was surprised to see that it wasn't me and them.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item 11, which is discuss and consider a resolution delineating the boundaries of the city of Park City as of December 31st, 2020. Doug?
Mayor and council, state law requires every city before the end of each calendar year to adopt and publish a resolution which defines the city's limits in a boundary way. You can see the attached legal description is really lengthy, but I will tell you that we had, I believe, three consensual annexations over the period of 2020 before this was adopted, and those have been inserted in there. Good work by Russ Avi, our planning administrator, to get those done. So I would recommend that you adopt Resolution 1059-2020, which refers to Exhibit A, the city limits or boundaries of the city of Park City as of December 31st, 2020. And I would note that there is a typo in the resolution which we'll correct before it's signed and published, and that's in the past and adopted date. It reads as of last February, when it should be today's date, December 8th of 2020.
Okay. Ben?
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve Resolution 1059-2020, defining the corporate boundary of the city of Park City, Kansas as of December 31st, 2020.
George?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, this is one of those annual things that we do at the end of every year. We got a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
Sean Lanier.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr. Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes 7-0. Thank you, Marlo. That brings us to item 12, which is discuss and consider approving the home buyers incentive plan and the exterior grant program and the exterior grant program and the exterior paint program for 2021. Sean?
Yes, sir. The city has offered a home buyer incentive plan since 2014, and earlier this year, council approved to add both an exterior grant program and an exterior paint program. The success of all these programs has been well-received by the community. To date for this year, the home buyers incentive plan, we've received 19 applications and processed for totaling $47,500 spent year-to-date. Under the exterior grant program, 32 applications have been received and 26 have been processed, totaling $31,308.74. And then under the exterior paint program, 10 applications have been received and five are in process, totaling $1,176.40. Annually, the council has made modifications to the home buyers incentive plan to more accurately target and incentivize the type of housing needed or desired in the community. The last modifications made were in 2018 and included authorizing a $2,500 incentive for all new subdivisions where a developer is current on their taxes and is willing to contribute $3,000 towards the closing costs. There are no incentive for developers who are not current on their taxes. There is not on leased properties, duplexes, or properties in Bear Hill Estates. Building permits issued prior to June 26, 2018 still remain grandfathered under the program. Staff proposes the home buyer incentive plan be continued with 2021 with the following specifications, and again, these are the things that are normally found on the application, that it's a qualified home buyer contracted by a licensed builder. The permit would be issued prior to December 31st, 2021. All construction performed is done by licensed contractors in the city. Periodic inspections performed per city code. Construction is completed within one year of issuance of a building permit. A certificate of occupancy is issued by the building inspector, and then again, that the builder/developer provide $3,000 incentive towards reducing closing costs. And finally, the applicants need to make certain that we have a W-9 on file to file with the IRS. As far as the fiscal impact on the 2021 budget, there was $125,000 allocated for home incentives, homeowner incentives. Staff recommends approval in dividing that up to where allocating $60,000 to the home buyers incentive program, $50,000 to the exterior grant program, and $15,000 to the exterior paint program. And then there's copies of each one of the applications, which have basically just had the dates modified to reflect the new year on them.
Thank you, Sean. This has really been a good program since its inception, and then with the add-on with the exterior grant and paint program, that's really helped out. If we go back and look at new home permits issued when we kind of got aggressive with it in 2018, we had 83 new home permits in 2018. We saw a slight dip in 2019 to 67, and this year we're at 49, of which 18 permits were just pulled for November. So, it's been a little soft most of the year this year. I think we all understand the impacts there, but it was good to see 18 permits pulled in November. Does anybody have any questions? Brandy?
John, can you remind me what 2020's budget was for this program?
2020's budget was for $95,000.
So we...
Yes, ma'am.
So we have still about, what, $16,000 left in this? Are there any applications that we had to turn away that possibly we could, we could bring them in and pay out? I mean, I know we have some pending, but are they pending, and do we foresee them being completed by the end of the year? I just don't want us to...
To leave money on the table, so to speak?
Yes.
The exterior paint program, no, that's not the case. The five that are already in process, it's individuals that, hey, it's $250 towards painting supplies, so there's no concern with that. The home buyers incentive plan, that's the one that was protected the most because you never knew exactly over the years that that program has gone anywhere from spending as much as $153,000 a year to where we averaged somewhere around $57,000 a year, and that's why it was left at that amount. The exterior grant program is the one program that we had to limit, and we actually came back. We started off with $25,000 and then increased it up to $40,000 because the response was so good on that. But again, the repairs need to be completed by the end of the year, so...
And so were there applications that we had that we turned away because we knew it would overexceed?
Yes, ma'am.
So, since we do have essentially $16,000 that hasn't been paid out, is there any way to relook at those applications and see if that work has been completed, so maybe we could possibly bring them in?
We could do that, ma'am. We could do that.
And then, where we talk about the building permits issued prior to June 26, 2018 that were grandfathered in, do we know how many building permits are still left that are grandfathered?
The anticipation is that there are none left. I know that earlier this year, we signed out two of them that were done right at the last minute, that sure enough dated back to June 25th of 2018, and we were kind of surprised by that, but sure enough, council had dictated that that would be grandfathered in, and we assumed that those were the last two, so...
Okay. And then I have one more thing. On the... On the, the Exterior Paint Program, on the August 11th meeting, we came back and added mobile homes to that. When I was reading through this, it talks about, when we look at the eligibility, single-family residential properties only. Does that include mobile homes, or should we reward that so that way we specify that it, it, mobile homes are included?
No, it's included, a single, a mobile home is considered a single-family residence.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we didn't make another change that just got missed here.
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Ben?
Yeah, I appreciate staff's work on the work getting in with the Exterior Grant Program and the Exterior Paint Program and all the time worked on there, and then again to the citizens who have taken advantage of this program. It's been a, it's been very helpful for many. So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the 2021 homeowners incentives, allocating $60,000 to the Home Buyer's Incentive Program, $50,000 to the Exterior Grant Program, and $15,000 to the Exterior Paint Program to be paid out of the general fund.
George?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item 13, which is discuss and consider an agreement with the city of Wichita, establishing 53rd Street North as a boundary which limits the extension of water and sewer service by each city unless otherwise agreed on a case-by-case basis. Doug?
Mayor and council, sometime approximately 15 years ago, council members from Park City and staff from the city of Wichita and Park City worked to come to an agreement about where a, a boundary line or a line of demarcation might be drawn to limit the areas of urban influence of both cities, and everybody remembers that pretty clearly as having been 53rd Street North. Earlier this year, I think maybe Sean was approached, but the city staff here was approached with, by a property owner, and I think it's a church that's planning to develop on a tract of land approximately nine acres north of 53rd in the county, not in the city of Park City, but in the county. And I believe it's just east of the, the half-section line there between Hydraulic and We are not able to serve them at present, sewer service, and so they had, they had then approached the city of Wichita, and the city of Wichita, I think, had looked at their engineer's plans and told them that they, they in fact could serve them with sewer and, and water service, but the city of Wichita staff remembered the agreement, and so there was some discussion between both staffs about how this might be handled. The thought was we would look at the agreement to see, make sure it said what we remembered it said, and nobody could find it. We could find proof that, that our governing body had adopted an agreement to, to set a boundary. Wichita found in their records an agenda report which showed that they in fact also approved one sometime around 2005, but nobody could lay their hands on a copy of it. So the, the sensible thing was, we all thought, let's just redo it. Everybody seems to agree it's 53rd Street. It seemed fairly simple. That did drag on for quite a while, and I think it was finally the, this property owner and this, and these people that wanted to build their church that finally prompted some action on both parties, parts. And so I prepared a, a short agreement, which you have in front of you, submitted it to staff at the city of Wichita, and they have indicated that, that they are going to present that to the city of Wichita, city council at their December 22nd, 2020 meeting, and that they would recommend approval. And likewise, staff here is recommending that, that council approve this agreement. It sets out what we all thought we had in place. It makes sense, and, and it also, it, it also gives both cities the ability to move over that line, Wichita to the north and Park City to the south if it's, if it's appropriate. And in fact, staff believes it is appropriate with respect to permitting the city of Wichita to serve this nine-acre tract, and you have in front of you a, a letter from the Public Works Department of the city of Wichita in which they have formally requested that, that being one of the requirements of the agreement that you have in front of you, is that there can be an exception to the, to the boundary line if the city that is allowing the exception agrees to it in writing. So if you agree to this, if you approve this agreement this evening, I would make it subject to approval by the city of Wichita. We won't sign it until they've approved it. And I also would ask that if you are to approve this, that you would consider authorizing staff to consent with, as you have approved it, to the city of Wichita extending water and/or sewer service to this 9.4-acre tract described in the December 7th letter that you have in front of you.
Thank you, Doug. That was a very good getting through that. Tom?
It's kind of a dicey deal because I went to Wichita and this when the agreement was drawn up. Doug was the attorney, so, and that was a long time ago. But the agreement was they wouldn't come across 53rd Street because they annexed Heights and immediately cut our water and sewer line, which was about a fourth of our income for those two things at the time. They de-annexed Miller Woods and gave it to us as part of the settlement and said they wouldn't go north of 53rd Street. This church is getting a manhole and an eight-inch sewer line along with the water service at Wichita that's looped up all over and over to Heights, so they've looped their water lines over there. They'll service that whole area before we can ever get there. And this agreement says if they can beat us there, they can have it.
No, it doesn't say that.
Says if you can't service it and they can, they've already got the manhole and they've got the water line.
We have to, we have to agree to it. All we have to do is say no.
Well, I just bringing up feelings from the past when this all happened.
Well, this is an agreement. This is not about feelings. That's why we're doing it.
I understand.
We're doing the agreement so that we have the ability to prevent them from doing exactly what, what you were suggesting that you thought they might do.
I'm seeing some soft words in here, so maybe we need to leave it that way. I don't know, but I, I just remember the problem. I saw John shaking his head as he remembers. This all happened about a year after Heights was annexed. They called us up one week and said, "We're going to cut your sewer line and water line today," and they did it. So, and that's what caused this problem. So I'm, and I can't remember what year it was, probably '06, somewhere along in there?
I don't remember.
'05, somewhere along, I don't know. We need an agreement, but I'm not sure this is, this, this is kind of like third stage down from where we were at, when we got the last one. And it went to their city council, and it went to our city council, and I was appalled that that was never filed with the courthouse or there's no record of it down here, so...
George?
Well, my memory goes back further than that, and, and there's more to it than that. Back in, I don't know if it was still in the 90s, I know Chief Anway was the chief of police then, so it would have been before 2003. There was, and I'll preface this by saying that we, the chief did not want to police a hostile resident, resident area, which was what, Riverview. Riverview requested Wichita annex them, and there was litigation ensued, and without going into great depth about it, as a result of that litigation, Wichita agreed to stay out of our territory. Now, that is my, that is my distinct memory, that that was the promise that was extracted. The attorney for Park City at the time who, who negotiated that has passed away. I, I don't know of any way, Doug says there's no records, so all I got's my memory, but my memory is very clear on that because there was, there was really, there was five families over in Riverview that really, that really protested against our annexation of that, and I'm not sure we ever really intended to annex it, but after the litigation, we had the right to annex it, but Park City didn't want to. And as a result, there was an agreement Wichita would not come north. Now, my memory is very clear on that.
I'd like to say I don't, that was before me, but I can tell you about the Heights side, and that's what I've been talking about, so, which is the area we're talking about down there right now, so...
Which, which I would say, I, I got blamed for that because the city talked about annexing Heights, and they talked to me, I was the chief, and I said, "If you annex them, I'm going to need two more officers for, for school resource officers." And they decided not to do it because they didn't want to hire two more officers. And somehow I wound up getting blamed for it, but I didn't have nothing to do with the vote on it. All I did was tell them the facts, that we needed two officers. So they didn't annex it, and Wichita did. It's that simple.
Okay, Ben?
So I'm looking here at the, at the agreement here, and I appreciate you, Doug, clearly on here, in section two, "In the event that property owners of land located north of the boundary line set out above and outside the corporate limits of Park City and Wichita request water or sewer service from Park City, and Park City is not able to provide the same within a functionally or commercially reasonable time, Wichita may request on a parcel-by-parcel basis permission to extend its water and sewer infrastructure north of the boundary line." So it's, it's very clear from what's written there that this is a case-by-case basis. We have the opportunity to say no or to say yes on this. So it seems like there's two issues that we're talking. One is just a simple agreement that's been drafted, which is very clear on what's done. The second one is what we have here from the city of Wichita requesting approval to provide water to a specific as, residence. So we're dealing with, one, the actual agreement, and then, two, our first case within the set agreement. And so I, I wouldn't want to confuse the two in this conversation because simply put, we need to, if, if we don't feel that, or if someone doesn't feel that, that wording is not strong enough, well, we can have that debate there, but I don't think that has anything to do with this case here that we're being asked on there. So I don't, I think that, I think that the writing of this is very clear, and I would support it as presented.
Tom?
Problem I got with it is you're going to have the sewer line down there and all the property around it. We're going to have to provide a sewer line down there and a water line down there or it will go the other way. We had an opportunity to already have it down there, and we passed on it with Miller Woods because we didn't want to run sewer line through there, and the city would have had to pay for a piece of it. So what you've done is you've got the gentleman on the corner there that's on the east side of this church property that's probably going to annex into Wichita immediately and get sewer and water, and we won't be able to stop it because we can't provide it. He's going to ask, and we won't be able to provide it.
It's not... Sir, it's not...
Agreement doesn't say anything about annexation. This agreement does not deal with annexation in any way. The only annexations in the state of Kansas that can happen today are consensual annexations.
Okay, but if you provide sewer and water, and part of the requirement is you come into the city, like it is here...
I don't understand.
Has been in the past, I think. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. Okay.
There's no requirement, if somebody asks for annexation, that we provide them water and sewer. If, if, if they wish to come in and we can't provide it, that's, you know, we, we can say yes to that.
Okay, well, there's another piece of property right next to that will be going in with it, so...
Well, this, this property is not being annexed into the city of Wichita under this request that you have in front of you.
I think that's part of the agreement to get water, though. Okay.
Well, they have to go through a process, and we have nothing to do with that. They're in the unincorporated area of Sedgwick County.
Okay.
So if they, if they add, if they meet the requirements and they, they touch the city of Wichita and they ask to be annexed, I mean, we can't do anything about that today.
Okay.
This doesn't change that one whit.
It's coming, so I'll just back out here.
George?
That was my question. If those people start getting water and sewer from them and they request annexation, we're going to have another fight with Wichita? You know, all the people that were involved in that Riverside or Riverview deal between Park City and that, all those people are gone now from Wichita and from Park City. I think all the hard feelings are gone from them, and everybody's kind of stayed in their own territory. But what happens if, if, if these people decide that they want to be part of Wichita and request annexation? Are we going to have a legal fight with Wichita?
Doug, that's what we're...
No, we don't have any say in any of that. Again, if these people wish to be in Wichita today, they can do that whether they can get water or sewer.
Even though that's Park City?
It's not Park City. It's unincorporated Sedgwick County. This agreement deals with the extension of water and sewer utilities north and south of 53rd Street and where the areas of influence are for both of the cities. Park City being north of 53rd, Wichita being south of 53rd.
Well, the big problem I got with it is why we got to ask permission to go south of 53rd? We never had to before. They were the ones who encroached in our territory, because I remember the litigation, and Park City won the litigation. But we didn't want Riverview, and the people over there had requested Wichita, and I don't know why we're being, on a case-by-case basis, having to ask permission to go south of 53rd. That was never part of the original agreement. So now we've got an agreement coming up where we got to ask permission to go south of 53rd, and I see no reason why we should be doing that. That, that stuff down there is our sphere of influence.
The, the agreement provides that south of 53rd in any unincorporated area, not in the city of Park City, if we wish to serve that area with water and sewer, then we, and, and it's between the limits of, of this, which is Broadway and Hillside. That's the limits of this agreement.
There's nothing, there's no loss there for them.
Okay.
What do you mean, there's no loss for them?
There's nothing along there in Wichita or would be bordering Wichita, on the south side of 53rd Street between Broadway and Hillside.
I think that was what I was going to say. There, near as I know, I'm not aware of anything outside corporate limits of either Wichita or the city of Park City between Broadway and Hillside.
Right. Okay. Well, this is just opening the door north of 53rd Street, west of Hillside, so...
But sir, I don't, I don't kind of understand how that's opening up the door.
Well, they're going to have services on that side of the street.
They're going to have services to the nine acres that's servicing the church.
Correct, and that nine acres is going to have enough services to do that whole quarter section down there.
Yes, sir, it will. And so when it's done, under this agreement, on a case-by-case basis, and they say, "Hey, we want to go beyond the 9.4-acre border," and we say no, that stops them dead in their tracks. This agreement says Park City has to approve it. If Park City doesn't approve it, they don't get to. So they, they could go ahead and annex it, like Doug said. They, we don't get to control that. They can annex it, but they're not going to be able to service it. So why would somebody volunteer to annex into Wichita if Wichita can't serve it?
Reading this...
If you love paying taxes.
Reading the provision, it says that if they ask for services and we can't provide it, then they get to take them.
That does not say that. It does not say that. You have to consent to it as a governing body.
And if we do that...
You're in charge.
And that property owner wants services, we have to provide it.
No, you do not, it says.
Tom, I think, I think you're twisting that because I think if, if Wichita takes them and they request services, then Wichita has to provide it. If we annex them and they request services, then yes, we have to provide it, but they, I mean, we still, they pay for it.
So if they come across the street, I'm trying to clarify this, if they come across the street with sewer and water and service that church, the property east of there, which is probably 10 or 15 acres on the corner...
More so than that, yes, sir.
Wants to develop it next week, they've got sewer and water there, we don't.
That's correct. Then they would have to, on a case-by-case basis, make another application, another letter to Park City, and if we say, "Sorry, we don't want you to do that," they've already agreed. We cannot go farther than north than 53rd Street without your approval. If we don't give the approval, then whoever wants to develop that corner of Hillside and 53rd is out of luck.
And that's a power that you do not have today.
Because even...
Nobody can put their hands on these, this agreement that everybody believes was in place. So as of today, if, if that tract of land that you're talking about decided they wanted to be in Wichita and they wanted water and sewer from Wichita, and you didn't sign this agreement...
They can do it.
There isn't a thing we could do about it.
Understand.
If you sign this agreement, then you can say no, and that's it.
But we got into this agreement because we aren't providing any services down there. It's why we're back to this. It's why we're back to this. That's why that church is doing what they're doing.
Yes, sir. And that's, and that's the, the one unintended consequence of this particular predicament, is the church.
Right.
You know, they originally came to us about a year ago and said, can you extend? And it's like, well, that, first of all, we'd have to hop, skitch over a couple pieces of property to extend service out there. And at the time, financially, it, it did not make sense to the city to try and leapfrog two different properties to try and annex a small 9.4 acre piece of property that was going to house a church. So I was very honest with them that, yes, we'd love to service you, but it doesn't make financial sense to the community at this time. Wichita's right across the street. It's within KDHE requirements as far as how far they can extend the sewer and the water line, so they can provide the service, and that's all they're trying to do right now. I know that there could've been some bad feelings, bad blood between the two communities 15 years ago. I, I'm unaware of that. I just know that Public Works in Wichita is trying to service this property so that a church can develop, hasn't mentioned annexation, hasn't meant designs on the corner or anything like that. So this, everybody, their legal department, research department, everybody has looked for this contract, and you and I've talked about it numerous different times, cannot seem to locate it. So right now, the city has no protection from Wichita doing that. So we just said, this is the best way to proceed, come up with a new agreement. If everyone agrees, that's what it kind of said along in the first place, then we're drawing a new line in the sand. You can't go north unless you have our permission.
Part of the sewer extension is consent annexation, I believe.
Okay. Ben?
Okay.
Yeah, I, again, I go back to the fact that, as far as the agreement, the agreement's very clearly written. If we want to make plans to start servicing this area, we can have that discussion to get sewer and water down there. But, but again, that, those are both conversations that aren't a part of the agreement. The agreement's just simply, can the city of Wichita, on a case by case basis, make requests from Park City to approve sewer and water? That's what the agreement is. Whether they, whether we say yes or no, if we say yes and they decide they want to annex, after that, that's, that's something we can deal with. But again, the, the, this, this agreement is very clear. And I don't see why, you know, we're, we're getting into what could happen, what might happen, what should happen. Either we need to make a plan to start servicing that area sometime soon, because that's part of this, as well, is that we would do it in a, in a reasonable time. And if we're not going to make plans on that side, then we have to understand that there might be more cases where the city of Wichita does have access easier to that area, to that southeast corner, or north, I'm sorry, northwest corner of Hillside and 53rd. So again, I think we're still talking two separate issues. The agreement's very clear. And if we want to talk the other issue, then I think that's something separate.
George?
Well, it goes back, I'm gonna see if I can't do some research, because my memory's very clear on that. Like I say, Chief Vanway was the chief of police then, so it had to be before 2003, and I believe it was in the 90s. But it was planned that Wichita agreed not to encroach on our territory anymore. That was a planned agreement. Now, I, I have very clear memory on that because of us having to put together a, a deal to try to convince these people to get along with us if, if Park City annexed them. But Park City chose not to do that. But part of that agreement was Wichita would stay out of our territory, and it seems like that agreement's no good. And I'm gonna do some research. I don't know if any of the council members are still alive or left that was part of that. That was a long time ago. It was far back before Doug's talking about, and that was the agreement. And it was there. I've got a very clear memory of it.
That area is outside of the terms of this agreement. That area is west of Broadway, so this agreement would have nothing to do with that.
Whatever you say, you're the attorney.
Well, isn't, that Riverview is west of Broadway, am I correct?
Well, yeah, but Riverview doesn't have nothing to do with that. That was part of the agreement before. Park City won that lawsuit, as I understand. They, they, they beat Wichita in that lawsuit. But instead of Wichita annexing it, and Park City annexing it, they come to an agreement. And somewhere, there's a record of that. I don't know where it's at, but there's gotta be a record of it. And everybody pretty well got along with that record until, until this came up.
Okay. Tom?
I think that was an agreement, it stopped at 45th Street at the time, Doug. I wasn't part of it, and I don't know much about it. But I know that United Warehouse came to Park City and wanted water and sewer, and Wichita wouldn't let us annex them. So that was a long time ago. And I don't have any background on any of that, but I do remember the stuff that was going on with, with the Heights area, so.
I, I could be wrong, but I tell you what, I'm gonna follow up with it. I'll, I'll talk to Carol Jones, because I'm pretty sure she was here then, and she would probably remember. And if I'm wrong, then I apologize. But I am, I am getting up in years. My memory could fade, but it, it seems pretty vivid to me that, and, and we had had no problems, no problems whatsoever until this very, this point. There used to be some pretty good battles between Park City and Wichita. I mean, there were some good ones.
Ben?
Sure. I think we've all said, unless there's others that'd wanted to, I will say, as far as we have a church who's wanting to build and expand their, their region, in a, in a region or community, however you want to look at that, and they're, I don't think they're trying to pick sides between city Wichita and Park City. So I, I hate that this is all centered around that part. They're just trying, doing their thing, trying to, trying to create their, their space and, and to do what they feel I would have them to do. So we can continue arguing on about this, who's fighting who on this. I think the, that the agreement's very clear, and so I would make a motion to approve the agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the same.
Second.
Okay. Tom, do you have anything else?
No.
John?
Just to make note for the clerk that has said stipulations that Doug mentioned.
That, that approval would be subject to the approval by the city of Wichita?
Yes, sorry, yes.
And, and does that include the consent to the request in the December 7th, 2020 letter that the church has submitted, or the Public Works of Wichita has submitted?
Yeah, I'm fine with that on there.
Randy?
Yeah, I'm okay, second.
Thank you.
Tom?
I would like to make a comment. I have seen the engineering drawings and stuff for the sewer extension to that property, and part of that is a letter from the city of Wichita saying you will consent to annex for services. So that piece of property will be going into Wichita. So.
It's tax exempt.
Say anything they want to say, but it's there, it's on the paperwork.
But it's a tax exempt church.
My problem with it is, we have to ask their permission to go south of 53rd, and for that reason, I won't support this. I don't think we need to ask Wichita's permission to go south of 53rd Street. So for that reason, I won't, I won't support this.
Okay. Anybody else? Tom?
I am gonna support it, because this agreement's better than no agreement. Doug's right. So I don't agree with it, but it's better than zero, so.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Not saying any further discussion. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And opposed? And that motion passes 6-1.
You'll be sorry.
That brings us to item 14, which is discuss and consider an ordinance designating a 25 mile an hour in residential areas and no through truck traffic for portions of hydraulic avenue. Doug?
What you have in front of you is an amendment to the standard traffic ordinance, specifically section 33, which talks about maximum speed limits, or set speed limits within the city. Public Works and the police department spent a significant amount of time looking at some areas of the city where they believe there should be some adjustment or tweaking to our existing speed limits. But more importantly, there was a recognition that, of a national program, and I, I think that's covered in the, the staff summary, 25 Alive, and it's a program which encourages cities to establish a maximum speed limit of 25 miles per hour on generally residential streets, or, or general, in this case, all streets in the city, unless otherwise posted, or otherwise established in the ordinance that you have in front of you. So this ordinance makes the most significant changes in subsection A1, which reads, "On all streets within the city, the maximum speed limit shall be 25 miles per hour, unless a different maximum speed limit is posted or established herein." Established herein would then be numbers 2 through 13. Those, those are otherwise established speed limits. And I'm aware of, of one, one area that is posted 20 miles per hour, which is, again, a different maximum speed limit. And if that is posted that way, that, that speed limit would control over the general statement in subsection A1 there that says 25 miles per hour. There were some changes in these other sections, 2 through 13, not all of them, but the, the general gist of the changes that the police department and Public Works decided on was to try to make the speed limit on east-west streets or north-south streets as uniform across the city, from east to west city limits, or from north to south city limits. There are some changes, primarily hydraulic, it changes, but on 77th, 85th, 61st Street, and 53rd Street, that you've noticed that that's numbers 6, 7, 9, and 10, that from east to west city limits, the speed limit is, is uniform. Secondly, this, this amendment also amends section 14-209 of our municipal code, which designates truck routes. The specific changes there were in subsection 4 and subsection 7, to address no through truck traffic on hydraulic between 53rd and 77th Street, and on 69th Street North, between Broadway and hydraulic. I think those were discussed in connection with the, the Amazon project, and then I think on hydraulic, 53rd Street to 77th Street, that was a recommendation of Public Works and the police department. And so that change has been made in section 14-209 of our municipal code.
Oh, and the, the truck traffic, I know that's one I get a lot of emails on, on people that live on there, wanting to see if we can't do something about it. So this was a good thing that we can incorporate with this. And then we also had some people come in and express some concerns about speed around one specific park, but Sean or the chief found this campaign, that's got some pretty good signage that's gonna go up around town and be consistent throughout the city. So I think it's kind of a good thing. Sean, did you have anything you want to add?
The only other thing is, on the first portion of it, where we're dealing with the various different speed limits, on section number four, which deals with hydraulic street, trying to maintain some consistency from north end to the south end, we do have a couple sections to where it turns to county, and that gets us out of whack. So as part of this, I've reached out to Tom Stoltz, the county manager, who's put me in their touch with their traffic engineer, and they all say that this is a very logical request. And so they too are considering changing that so that it would be complementary to our, so that way you start off on the southern end, it's 40 miles an hour, till you hit 35, remains 35 until you get back up on the, the north side of town, and then it increases. And the other one would be section 6, which is on 53rd Street. There's a portion of the, that 53rd Street that is also county, that right now, it goes from 40 to 45, back down to 40. So we're looking to make that consistent with the county, so.
Thanks, Sean, for reaching out to them. Tom?
What is the restriction between 53rd and 61st Street gonna do for development in the area?
On-
Truck traffic?
On hydraulic?
Yeah.
Between 53rd and 61st?
Right.
It doesn't limit development at all? This is actually-
I understand, but a part of the thing is a restriction for trucks.
No through trucks.
Through trucks.
So when we say no through trucks, that just means if somebody says, this is the easiest way for me to go, and I want to go this direction, that's when they get in trouble. But if they have a bill of lading, if they have a delivery, if they have a point of origin or a point of destination that's within that area, they have the right to go to that. So as far as the, the development that's just on the 80 acres to the south of here, it doesn't impact them at all. They're, they're going to their destination. So that, those trucks are appropriate. So this is just taking care of the trucks that are thinking hydraulic is an easier way of handling it rather than using the, the highway or Broadway.
I can see that being an issue with people pulling up their truck heading to that facility, and the guy behind him pulling, went the road, so, you know, and missed the sign.
Yeah, I do have, I think the same, probably similar concern that Tom is, is saying there. And this might be a, a question more for you on there, is really, what is the way, when we're talking, you know, truck, trucks start driving up 53rd, they go into the 80 acres, let's just say they go into the 80 acres. I mean, how, how does one know if they're through traffic or not? Through truck traffic or not, sorry?
Well, if there's a police officer just south of the property that's being developed, the 80 acres, and all of a sudden they see him bypass the 80 acres and continue on to the north, they may want to stop him and say, hey, by the way, where are you, where are you going? Where's your bill of lading? Well, my bill of lading's in Valley Center. Well, guess what? You're getting a ticket.
I mean, I could just see from, from citizen standpoint, who do contact on this issue, saying, well, I see trucks driving up and down this street. Well, I mean, they're, they could be through traffic, they might not be through traffic. They're-
And that is true. There, there's always, there will be those trucks that are, you know, somebody is over in the horseshoe, and, and there's a moving truck, they're getting ready to move. And so a semi's gonna go down that neighborhood that's not normally a place that a truck would go. So those, there will be some times that a police officer will stop them and say, where are you going? And yes, they've got a valid reason for going that direction. We've talked with the folks that are developing the 80 acres to the south. Their trucks are all being, going to be directed, you turn south on hydraulic, heading south, we're getting to the highway, and we're getting there via 53rd Street. We're not to go on 61st Street, so, you know.
I guess my, my thought, my suggestion would be is to maybe make it from 61st Street to 77th, only because at that point, you would eliminate any unnecessary officer stopping for just saying, well, I think this could be the case, or people complaining. It just, I mean, either way works. It's just, I'm thinking, you would probably set yourself up for more phone calls or, or emails by the fact that that's a very known one-mile stretch, where you're gonna have people who are using that for truck traffic, because we do have industry there that requires that, and people will probably get confused between what's through traffic, through truck traffic, and what is not.
Primarily, the, the goal is to reduce the, the primary truck traffic along hydraulic, closer to residential neighborhoods. So right now, stopping at that 80 acres seems to me a logical demarcation point. If, if you're shutting it off at 61st Street, well, then that means it's appropriate for them to use 61st Street for truck traffic as well. And I think that that's one of the benefits, the way it's written right now, is it reduces the truck traffic on 61st Street as well.
Okay. No, that's fine. I was, I was-
Yes, sir.
That was my, the other question I had, though, is also, is related to the speed limit portion there, and not so much to the speed limit portion, as well as, as much as, I know that the, the radar test was set up in a couple other locations, primarily the one that we had several residents come in on, along Grove Street.
Grove Street.
And then-
And some in the horseshoe.
Then question on the horseshoe, because I didn't see any information related to, to that. I didn't know if we had any of that available.
And part of the reason, and we do not, I don't believe so, because I, if I remember correctly talking with the chief, you had called me earlier to express some concerns about that. Part of the reason why this was delayed, because this has been sitting in the, the queue getting ready for some time, was the, the radar trailer, we had some corrupted data, and we needed to have the circuit board rebuilt and everything. So some of the data or the locations that we had originally chosen, which included the horseshoe and Grove, that was one of the first places we put the trailer on. The data was corrupt- The data was corrupted, so.
Would it be possible to do those places?
Yes, sir.
Just to get the data off of it? Obviously, it's not going to affect our decision on this, but it'd be good to at least get that data.
We do have data on that second patch that we did on-
On the horseshoe?
No.
Or no on Grove?
On Grove.
We'll get you that, sir.
I appreciate it.
George?
You put a 25 mile an hour speed limit on Grove, that's going to be a real strawberry patch. You know, nobody's going to drive 25 mile an hour down through there. You know, you've got to be realistic. It's a wide-open street, it's what you'd call a fast street, just like hydraulic, and people are not going to drive 25 mile an hour down Grove. They're just not going to. They don't drive 30 now.
Actually, on the data that we got on that, 74% of the people drive the speed limit on Grove on that last patch that we got. But I will tell you, the people that have called and complained want that at 15 miles an hour with speed bumps.
That's not realistic.
Yeah. And that's where I feel like the 25, that's about the most we could do. And I think with the added signage of the Keep Kids Alive, it kind of puts that out there a little bit more, just to kind of pay attention.
Well, I tell you, Mayor, I try to drive the speed limit. But I tell you what, is I drive around town and stuff, and you know, I drive the speed limit, and you know, I'm a traffic hazard. You know, people are not going to pay attention to your signs.
15 miles an hour, you've got to ride your brakes all the way down that.
Yeah, like hydraulic, that's a fast street. If you're driving down north on hydraulic from 61st Street and you're sitting business with someone, you look down, you're going to be doing 40 mile an hour. It's because of the wide, wide-open area, just like Grove.
If you go back and we do that traffic study, what it's going to tell you is to raise the speed limit. That'll be the information that we get out of that. I mean, if we set that out there long enough. This is a good compromise. It's drop 25, it's throw some signage up to put things out there so people may pay a little bit more attention to the park area, but.
You know, I don't know if the chief still got the book or not, but when I left it, we did traffic studies, we used the hoses, and the two fastest places in town where the speed limit has really been broken was between 49th Street North and 53rd on Broadway and from Jacksonville this way through that school zone up to hydraulic. Those were the two, that was where most of the speeding took place, I mean, really egregious speeding was taking place in those days. And I seriously doubt if it's changed a whole lot.
Ben?
Let me get back up here to this page so I can make the motion on here. I would go ahead and move that we would approve ordinance 1112-2020 and ordinance amending sections 14-202 and 14-209 of the municipal code of the city of Park City relating to maximum speed limits, the designation of truck routes, and repealing the originals of said sections 14-202 and 14-209.
Randy?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Marla, would you call the roll?
Sean Lanier?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Sossetta?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Nay.
Randy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that ordinance passes 6-1. Thank you, Marla. That brings governing body reports. Just want to say that there was a public hearing listed for the land bank because we might have had to amend the budget, but because the council did not take any action on the agreement that we had at the last meeting, there was no such public hearing tonight. With that, start with George.
You know, our country's in trouble. Our hospitals are full, people are dying. And I can tell you, being a person that's high-risk, I take it pretty serious. I would hate to think that I would be asymptomatic and give it to someone. I would certainly hate to have that on my conscience. I wish people would really stop and think about what they're doing because I tell you what, when you're dead, that's permanent. You are gone. That's all I got.
Okay. Randy?
I don't have anything tonight.
George?
Yeah, I wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year as we get ready to celebrate the birth of our Lord and Savior. Unemployment, for a lot of folks are going to be running out into this month. I want to give some information out where they can possibly seek help. One of them is 211 Kansas through the United Way. It's an actual phone number, 211, they can call. You know, a lot of folks are still going to be in need of assistance. Also, the Cedric County Emergency Assistance Program, 316-462-3775. They help a lot of folks who've been affected by COVID that need possibly help with rent and/or utilities and other assistance as well. So there are going to be a lot of folks in need. So I want to make sure our residents and other folks have those resources as well. That's all I have.
Jim?
Nothing to add tonight.
Tom?
The only thing I wanted to bring up, I wanted to make Sean aware of it and council, is that on Wampa, we are currently paying, I think, a 1.6% fee above the 20, it used to be 80/20, and now it's 79 or 78/4 or something like that. And there was discussion today of raising that percentage to 5%. Derby brought up that they've got a project now that their share on that 1.6 is $68,000, and the impact would take that to $255,000 on one project. And so that got everybody's attention, and they kind of backed off on it, but they're looking for inputs from cities on the best way to try to pick up some additional revenue for city shares. So I'll be in to talk to you on that.
Sir, appreciate it.
Ben?
Sure, just want to, again, wish everyone Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We'll see you next year.
Sean?
I have nothing tonight, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And Ben?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. Thank you.